Having determined a court is present, I call the November first, two thousand twenty-two Town of Dayton, Massachusetts Special Annual Town Meeting to order. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Dayton that are qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet here in the Dayton Middle School Auditorium today, on Tuesday, the first day of November, two thousand twenty-two, at the hour of seven P. M., to act in the articles presented within the warrant. Please note the closest emergency exits are right in the rear, and also my. And everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please confirm all non-registered voters received in the non-registered voter section on the right? All registered voters are within the two sections here. Everyone has checked in. Now I'll take a moment of silence to remember the town residents, families, and friends who are no longer with us. And if you approach Veterans Day, say thanks to all those who have dedicated their service to our country. Thank you. As you progress through motions and discussions on the floor this evening, please ensure to direct all comments and questions through me. There's an entertainment address prior to commencing on discussion. Keep sides conversations to a minimum, allowing all residents and their ability to express their views and opinions. Are there any housekeeping motions?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we dispense with the reading of the warrant. I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we dispense with the reading of the articles and that references to them be made by number and content.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town is sit in judgment this evening at ten P. M. I second it.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the reports of the town officials.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we hear the reports of town officials.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a selectman or reporter?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town officials, to the residents of Dayton gathering here this evening. My name is Leonard Hull, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and I am honored to present tonight's report on behalf of the Board and my colleagues, Selectmen Ken Pacheco and Selectmen Peter Karen. I would like to also thank Town Administrator Mike Mullin for his tireless efforts. We are very fortunate to have him serving this town. Since we last met at June's annual town meeting, the town has continued to see personal transitions in a number of key town departments. In early July, we welcomed new D. R. School Superintendent Bill Rooney to our community, who succeeded Dr. Anthony Azan. I count myself as one of many officials in the community who is already tremendously impressed with Superintendent Rooney's leadership. We welcome Superintendent Rooney as a member of the Dayton community. In the first part of July, we saw the retirement of longtime prime time and council unaging employee Sheila Newey. All of us who know Sheila know how dedicated she was to Dayton and our senior community. We wish her nothing but the best in her well-deserved retirement. We also welcome a new team under the leadership of Council Unaging Director Fellow Powell that includes Trista Tate, Laura Madeiras, and Kate Lawrence. Last spring, we also began planning for the retirement of former Police Chief Ward McDonald. Chief McDonald, a forty-three-year member of the Dayton Police Department, not only served our community with honor and distinction, but as an institution and a friend to many here of Dayton. We thank Chief McDonald for his tireless service to the Dayton Police Department and our town residents and wish her the best of health and happiness in his well-deserved retirement. In August, we also welcomed Police Chief Sean Cronin to his new role leading the Police Department further into the future. Chief Cronin has built a distinguished reputation as a leader not only within the Dayton Police Department, but throughout our community. He is the chief that meets the moment as we confront modern-day law enforcement challenges. And to understand that, we don't have to look any further than to open Dayton's new comfort dog, who will be a huge help in assisting the Dayton Police Department to confront those challenges at all. He has also been a wonderful addition to the Dayton School Department. We very much look forward to working with Chief Cronin and seeing all the strides that the men and women of the Dayton PD, DPD, will continue to make under his command. Last one, we also recognize the retirement of Captain Chris Redd, a dedicated leader who held many roles in the Dayton Fire Department, including that of fire prevention officer for the last thirty-six years. As a member of the Bristol North Law Critical Incident Stress Management Team, Captain Redd in nineteen ninety-nine reported to Worcester in response to the fatal fire of Worcester Coal Storage Facility. He traveled to New York City shortly after the nine eleven terrorist attacks and responded to the historic local fire scenes, including the Taunax Bowl, Hillside Country Club, and many other emergency scenes within the Town of Dayton and surrounding communities. Captain Chris Redd is a homegrown Ditoonian, served our community with great excellence and pride and distinction. And the town is very proud to recognize and congratulate him upon the occasion of his well-earned retirement. Thank you. The town also saw an additional transition in the position of Town Accountant, and we're proud to welcome Serena Amro to Dayton in August as our new Town Accountant. We have been truly impressed with Serena's ability to hit the ground running during these last few months, and we are very excited to have someone of Serena's caliber and expertise as our Town Accountant. Speaking of town finances, in early June, the State Department of Revenue presented the Financial Management Review completed during the early part of two thousand twenty-two for the town. The review recognized the many changes that have been occurring with regard to our financial team personnel. It commended the town and our ability to manage and build upon our fiscal management foundation through these transitions and made additional recommendations that will be considered by the Selectmen and at town meeting in the coming months and years. Since we last met, I am proud to also report that thanks to the leadership of Selectmen Ken Pacheco, Library Trustee Ronald Condon, Town Administrator Mike Mullin, Library Director Josh Lynn Tavarez, and Building Commissioner Jim Haddia, we were able to close on the acquisition of two oh seven Main Street to become the new home of the Dayton Public Library, something that this community has longed for for over twenty-five years. The acquisition of two oh seven Main Street was a significant step in securing a new home for the library, culminating years of dedication and hard work by many people. Now comes the planning and renovation, which we expect it will take approximately two years to complete. During the summer, we were excited to learn that thanks to the efforts of Senator Mike Pacheco and Representative Pat Hadda, Dayton was awarded two hundred thousand in state EMI funding to help make our renovation efforts possible. This funding, together with an initial hundred and fifty thousand dollars approved at annual town meeting, will allow for significant improvements to the building's exterior, which were recently put on hold. I put out to bid outside. In addition to benefiting from state grant funding, which also helped us complete infrastructure and online accessibility projects, including last month's launching of the new Town of Dayton website. We also launched renewed economic development planning efforts in the late spring together with the Dayton Development and Industrial Committee, which is also being grant funded. We hope a renewed economic development plan informed by the priorities of all Ditoines will serve as a blueprint for commercial and industrial development within the town to support local business growth and strengthen our tax base. As part of these efforts, the Dayton Development and Economic Commission is holding an Economic Development Planning Forum at Old Town Hall on Monday, November seventh, at six P. M. We very much encourage all interested residents to attend. As we get into the financial related articles of tonight's warrant, I want to reemphasize the points made at last week's Board of Selectmen meeting when we reviewed the priorities that shape the goals of this evening's special town meeting. That the Board of Selectmen maintains a top priority relating to the town's fiscal discipline and operation sustainability to limit our taxpayers' burden. Included in the warrant, we will note proposed uses of free cash to fund police station debt service and to reduce the tax rate, increase our stabilization and capital stabilization fund account, and fund a number of capital investments. I want to thank Finance Committee for its continued leadership, as well as the efforts of our departments, boards, committees, that have gone into making tonight's meeting possible. And I'd also like to say thank you to the Capital Outlay Committee that has also had a pretty deal of input in setting the financial priorities of this community. I would also like to thank our department heads, our employees, and all the residents of Dayton who serve on boards and commissions. Without your dedicated service, Dayton would not be the wonderful town with the big heart that we are. The Board of Selectmen looks forward to this evening's discussion and is happy to answer any questions about any of the articles as we move through the warrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Your report from Finance.
We're gonna, Finance today will make our recommendations during the articles, but I did wanna just note what the stabilization, capital stabilization, and free cash numbers would be because I almost very appreciates that. If all the articles assess recommended stabilization in the account would have one million eight hundred ninety-one thousand. Capital stabilization would have one million four hundred eighty-seven thousand. And free cash would still be five hundred fifteen thousand.
Thank you. Your report from Schools. Capital Outlay. Report of Assessors.
Mr. Moderator.
If you'd like a microphone, there's one in the rear.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Board of Assessors, I submit the following report. Since the annual town meeting, the Board and its employees have been working on real estate property values and verification of Chapter sixty-one land. Sales information submitted to the Department of Revenue has been approved. In cooperation with the Tax Collector and his staff, an audit of a delinquent tax account was conducted, which verified the total outstanding tax liability of the property owner of record. This information was shared with the zoning Board of Appeals because it was directly related to an open project. We express our thanks and appreciation to our staff and that of the Tax Collector for taking on this additional research project while continuing to maintain the day-to-day operations of their respective offices. Regarding land classified under Chapter sixty-one A or B, it was voted that effective today, November first, two thousand twenty-two, the Board will use all legal means to verify Chapter sixty-one land, including aerial inspection. Following tonight's meeting, we will prepare for the classification hearing with the Board of Selectmen, which will lead to setting the tax rates for F Y twenty-three. Thank you respectfully, submitted Eric Easterday, Chairman, Nancy J. Gulat, Clerk, and William Moore, Member.
Thank you. Are there any other boards or committees that wish to present or report? Thanks for the follow. Seeing none. Motion to second.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the request of the town.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of four thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars nineteen cents to pay prior year bills as listed in the warrant. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance, the Finance Committee recommendation is a report of Selectmen recommendation.
What does Selectmen recommend?
Motion made and seconded with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. As this is a prior year bill, it requires a nine-tenth majority vote of the body. Be approved. I wanna confirm, all non-registered voters are on the far right section? Is everyone on the back and side wall registered voters? I need you to step into the room now. Thank you. All in favor, Article three.
Aye.
Apologies. Article two. I'm gonna retake that vote, Article two. All in favor of Article two?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote from, vote, uh, transfer from free cash a sum of three hundred sixty-seven thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars to make the payment to the police station bond and an additional two hundred thirty thousand dollars from free cash to reduce the tax rate. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation is a report of Selectmen recommendation.
What does Selectmen recommend?
It is like, motion made and seconded with Board of Selectmen recommendation and Finance Committee recommendation. You please, as we state, the total of both.
The total of the two transfers, five hundred ninety-seven thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars.
Motion made and seconded and with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars sixteen cents for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one and fiscal year two thousand twenty-two personnel expenses and to raise an appropriate fifteen thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars seventy cents uh, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three personnel expenses for employees covered under the recently settled Dayton Dispatchers Collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Apologies. It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
What does Selectmen recommend?
Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Motion's made and seconded with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation on Article four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to be expended by the Fire Chief to fund a fire station feasibility study.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
What does Selectmen recommend?
Would anybody like to speak to this motion? I can. Chief, Mr. Moderator, please.
So we're, we're looking to, um, just go out to bid for a honest project manager and architect to look at Station One and any possibilities for renovation and expansion. The building was built in the nineteen sixties. It's overlived its life, and we just need to take a look at it. Is there any other questions I won't have to answer?
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Say your name and address, please.
Uh, R. Costa, twelve seventy-five Williams Street. I'm not doubting that, that, that there is a need for this. My only question is, if we spend this hundred fifty thousand dollars now, aren't we gonna have the money to follow through on any, on any recommendations which come from it?
Chief, would you like to speak to that?
I didn't hear the question.
If I could restate it directly, if I, if we spend this money now, will we have the funds or the ability to act upon the findings of this study?
Um, we would have to come back to town meeting to approve whatever design or whatever gets recommended by the architect. So we're not doing anything to the fire station. We're just looking for systematic designs.
Further discussion, questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars to be expended by the Police Chief for the purchase of one fully equipped police vehicle, including computer, firearm, radio, antenna, and any related accessories.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
What does Selectmen recommend?
Motion's made and seconded in Article six with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. Any discussion?
Hey, Jim Seaton from six seventy-five Main Street. I just wondered, um, how many vehicles do they have and how much personnel do they have to drive? When I go by, it seems like there's more parked than there are actual movement in and out of there. Just basic question.
Fair question. Uh, so currently, we have fifteen full-time officers. We have six, excuse me, five reserve officers. Every day is different. Every shift is different as far as personnel. I'd have to defer to Detective Richards on the exact number of cars, but, uh, they're getting used all the time. I mean, I can't speak to when you're going by and seeing the cars, sir, but, um, we have five frontline cars that are constantly being used twenty-four seven, plus some detail cars that are out and about. So we are using them. Uh, we have personnel that, luckily, a lot of police departments don't have the personnel put behind the wheel. We're not in that situation, but they are being utilized.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to transfer from free cash the amount of thirty thousand dollars to be expended by the Parks and Recreation Commission to install a new asphalt parking lot and all associated construction relative to the tennis basketball court facility located in fifteen fifty-one Sunset Avenue.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
What does Selectmen recommend?
Motion's been made and seconded. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation on Article seven. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Tennis says junior, eleven forty-seven Sunset Street, and the chairman of Parks and Recreation. Um, what we're looking to do here is the tennis and basketball court, now pickleball court, uh, facility is probably our most widely used facility throughout Parks and Rec. Um, and it's tough to tell from the pictures or even from the presentations that we've had, but the, um, that was the old parking lot from the old police station and this kind of a rather decrepit transition from what was a parking lot to the actual court surfaces themselves. We did spend some time this, um, summer creating ADA accessible walkways to get into the courts themselves to amass off on disability grants. What we're looking for here is to just provide a new surface for a widely used area so we have a safe place for people to transition from their vehicles into the courts themselves.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to be expended by the Highway Superintendent for by design and engineering. to be expended by the highway superintendent to provide design and engineering services and related drainage upgrades on certain portions of Park Street.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion's been made and seconded with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation in Article eight. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article nine.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town transfer from free cash the amount of one hundred five thousand dollars to be expended by the highway superintendent to purchase one light duty dump truck with snow pile and any related equipment.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. The Finance Committee recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion's been made and seconded in Article nine with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article ten.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote transfer from free cash the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to be expended by the town administrator to install a relevant system on the existing walkway at Town Walk and construct a stairway from the park area to the walkway. Finance Committee recommends.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation? Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion's been made and seconded with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendations. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote transfer from free cash the sum of thirteen thousand dollars to be expended by the town administrator and or board of health for a point-of-sale system for the transfer station and related functions.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Article eleven, the motion is seconded with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of money not to exceed two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars to be expended by the highway superintendent for services relating to final design and permitting for the Pleasant Street Muddy Co-op Bridge Project.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
So motion seconded with Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen recommendation in Article twelve. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the amount of five thousand dollars for Lavenizel Waterways account, number two four zero dash three dash two nine five dash zero 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 dash two zero dash five nine six one, to the Harbor Masters account, number zero one zero dash zero dash two nine five dash zero 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 dash seven zero dash five two four zero, equipment repairs and maintenance to be expended by the Harbor Masters for acquired maintenance of the town control vote. Finance Committee recommends.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded with Finance Committee recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Article thirteen, there's a motion and seconded with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of ninety thousand dollars to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund established to cover unfunded actuarial liability for retirees, healthcare, and life insurance benefits.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation in Article fourteen. Would you like to speak to this motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote should rescind the vote for Article eleven of the November first, twenty twenty-one special town meeting to transfer from free cash a sum not to exceed forty thousand dollars to expended by the Dyton Trails Committee to fund a feasibility study to provide viable options and initial concepts to connect the future two-mile T C I Sweet Knoll Trail to the north and south with on-road and off-road trail options to connect the town of Dyton to the Taunton River Trails Network, north across Three Mile River to Taunton, and south along the waterfront to Somerset.
Motion made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Is there a Finance Committee recommendation? Motion made and seconded with Board of Selectmen recommendation. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article sixteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the amount of six hundred fifty thousand dollars to the capital stabilization account. Finance Committee recommends.
Motion's been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion made and seconded in Article sixteen. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Articles sixteen and seventeen are putting money into the capital and, and regular stabilization accounts on monies that came back from the school for one-time return of excess funds. We need, no need to come down the road and we know that money's not coming back, uh, gonna be here again next year. So we want to put that money into stabilization.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. As this is a transfer into a stabilization account, it requires a two-thirds majority vote. I just have all registered voters in the room so I can establish. All in favor, Article sixteen?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of three hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars, fourteen cents to the stabilization account.
Seconded.
Finance Committee recommends.
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion's been made and seconded. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. Could you restate that?
Three hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars, fourteen cents. That amount, if I may comment.
Motion's been made and seconded with Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee recommendation. That's a sum of two hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars and fourteen cents.
Three hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars and fourteen cents. Yes. So in the warrant, you'll see an amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars listed that has been reduced to that three ninety-two, two ninety-two, fourteen. Um, as, uh, as we as the Finance Committee accounted for uh, the prior year um Dispatchers Collective bargaining agreement, no one would have to uh pay, pay that amount so we've reduced the capital stabilization by that amount.
Thank you. Is there any discussion in Article seventeen? Seeing none. Is this a transfer in the stabilization account that require two-thirds majority? Is that all the registered voters in the room? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town of Dyton General Bylaws by adding new article after Article thirty-eight as presented in Article eighteen of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Motion's been made and seconded with Board of Selectmen recommendation. Would you like to speak to this motion? Is there any discussion?
Uh, this, this motion would mention include all positions. It says board committee. We have commissions and we have individuals who serve in single positions that would not really fall into this. So we have a solo commission that gets paid. So you're gonna include the word commission. And then we have several positions that are elected or appointed where one person serves and in the past those uh single uh positions benefit from an increase. I'm just thinking we need to add a few more words to this. For example, town moderator, single position, and further on a time's vote for three years. Well, there should be wording that would cover somebody who gets elected each year, having served three years. I just want this to be applicable across the board. We have a tree one situation also if we have elections. So what I'm proposing is some kind of amendment to include the commissions and individuals appointed or elected who hold single positions.
To clarify, are you making a motion to amend?
Uh, no, I'm thinking it's an honor. Cause it just says boards and committees.
Okay.
We have paid commission who should be included if, if this, if this is passed and it goes to action. So.
Okay. So I hear a question and a comment, right? So.
Yeah, I think we amend it.
Mr. Moderator, would you like this, this, uh, cool, I make that motion to add the additional uh personnel?
Right now she hasn't, so would you like to speak, respond to her question?
Town council?
Town council can speak to it, but I do agree with you.
No, no, I'm, I'm, if I, Mr. Moderator, if I may ask town council, should that wording be added to include those positions of those individuals?
Can anybody speak to the question of whether that should be added to the model?
So I can speak to the question and so it should be added if the intent is to include those positions. So as, as worded, it applies to those positions that are stated. If other positions are added, such as individually appointed uh uh town, town um officers or commissions as opposed to committees, then that, that would have to be changed.
Good question.
So as written, I'm my column, town administrator, as written, uh, the proposed bylaw amendments would apply to uh um um uh to boarding committee members. I do, I understand and frankly agree with adding the commission members to clarify that. Uh, however, the intent of the proposed bylaw amendment was to apply uh to members of a board of committee and now commission. Uh, it wouldn't apply to those elected or appointed officials who are appointed individually. The intent of the bylaw is written, I think, adopted by the selectmen. I would, I would, I, I, I have the ability to apply uh specifically to the members of the board, said committee, and commissioners.
And what I'm addressing is what's happened historically in this town. If a two percent increase was voted, whether it's the moderator or the tree one or someone else, you can't leave them out at this point. That's why I suggest we add a word commission because we have a paid, at least one paid commission and single position stipends.
So, cool, I make motion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that we amend this treaty. Um, elected versus title, elected and appointed board comma, committee comma, commission comma, and single position stipends.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I shouldn't finish yet. This is, this is gonna go first. But just stop. The Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee shall enter and propose and recommend salaries slash stipends by applicable elected and appointed board comma, committee comma, commission members, and single position holders and based on the town's fiscal position. Reduce such salaries to periodic wage adjustments, no shorter than once every three years. Set salaries and stipends for such elected and appointed board comma, committee comma, commission members comma, and sing, and single position holders who have served as a member of the same Appleville Board or committee or position for longer than three years or three consensual one-year terms.
Are you done? Uh, second, second of motion?
No, no, I, I, I'm waiting for them. All right, um, on three consensual one-year terms, they receive an additional salary slash Dyton rate representing an additional ten percent of the base salary slash slash, is that it? Only elected and appointed board comma, committee comma, commission members comma, and single position holders who have demonstrated compliance with our local town and state guidelines shall be eligible to receive set salary slash Dyton.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Sorry, I couldn't hear this sooner.
That's fine.
That's why I was late tonight when I saw this.
Motion's been made and seconded. As this is an amendment, a moment. As this is an amendment to the article as presented, the motion is made on the floor. This is a discussion motion and will require a majority to amend the motion that's on the floor as written. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend?
We have two elected positions in the town. Can you hear that?
I'll restate it.
There are two, at least two elected positions in the town that there is already, already a contractual agreement about salary increases. And I, I caution about changing that. Those two positions are the treasurer and the town clerk. And already increases as part of the contract.
Uh, so as the elected town clerk, the townspeople vote on my salary every year. So I don't have a contract per se. I write in contract that's voted at town meeting, so um I have no exactly as far as the treasurer or the town clerk, but all elected officials who have a salary, I don't know about stipends, but the salary, they're listed at the annual town meeting every year and the townspeople have to vote on it. So there's no, no contracts, my dollars.
I'm sorry, is that a motion, a table?
No.
No.
So there's a motion to table on, on the floor. That motion is out of order. You cannot table a motion to amend. You can only table a mo, a primary motion. So first we must act on the motion to amend, then we can act if it's decided to make a motion to table. Would you like to speak further to the amendment?
Yes. In looking at the amendment as written, it states that applicable board or committee to serve for longer than three years may receive an additional salary stipend rate representing an additional ten percent of the base salary stipend in both positions that I mentioned. When I'm talking about small stipends here, which are the significant full-year, full-time employees. Three years, ten percent of the base salary slash stipend.
Mr. Moderator asking for a more detailed one. Yes, the motion says applicable elected, uh, and appointed board. So those that have a contract, those that have salaries that are established, uh, would not apply to this increase.
Sir, any others? Please.
Um, Paul Reynolds of Twenty-Five Main Street. I am also the elected treasurer and tax collector for the Town of Dyton. Um, as a full-time employee, um, I have concerns about the inclusion of the word salary in the, in the proposed bylaw. Um, by understanding the intent of the proposed bylaw, it's to foster civic engagement and retention for our boards, committees, and commission members. It is not intended to be a windfall or a retention bonus for individual elected officials. Uh, so I have concerns about the inclusion of the word salary in there. I believe that potentially that more in line with the original intent and the spirit of this proposed bylaw, that perhaps it might be more appropriate to strike the word salary entirely and leave it as stipends where they do note stipends. Uh, whereas I'm a full-time employee, works full-time at Town Hall, I receive a salary, not a stipend. Uh, I have concerns about the inclusion of the word salary in there and I believe that it would be a lot more in line with the proposed spirit of the bylaw by understanding the intention correctly to perhaps be more appropriate to strike salaries entirely so that the full-time elected officials of the town, such as myself and the town clerk, are excluded, which I believe is the fiscally morally correct thing to do and I believe is in line with the proposed spirit of the bylaw.
Thank you. Sir, any others who've not spoken? You have two D amendment that are on the floor. Would you like to speak to it?
Uh, Dan Eaton, four hundred Lincoln Avenue. Um, as a follow-up to the comment that my selectman Chico made, I was wondering if you could ask the town attorney whether Mr. Chico was pro-rat that even with the proposed amendment, that the positions being described as just town clerk and treasurer would not be applicable to this because they are, uh, voters voted at town meeting as specified in the House of Representatives would not be included in the language of the debate.
Is that?
Yes. So as was pointed out, the, um, the proposed bylaw does include salaries. It says salaries slash stipends. So I think if there's going to be positions that are excluded either because they have a contract or they have, uh, you know, a substantial salary attached, it would be best to exclude those positions either based on the position or based on they have a contract in order to make it clear that whatever positions are intended to be excluded. Otherwise, I, I think that is a good argument that it would be, it would be inclusive of all those positions.
Further discussion on the amendment?
I think if we're going to make that bylaw change, that it needs to be, for the sake of transparency, we need to list out the individual positions. I know it's going to be a much longer bylaw, but this positions of historical parts of America aren't paid. So we need to have a discrepancy between what positions are paid, who's eligible for that increase, and who is excluded completely.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Does a bylaw change, does it require a ticket as well?
It does not. And we're, we're not discussing bylaws. We're discussing amendment right now. Discussion on amendment. Sir, what?
The reason why you leave both salaries and stipends in there are because certain boards, not like board assessors, receive the salary. It's voted at town meeting, right? The other thing is there are others, such as the moderators, such as the tree ward, who receive stipends. The finance committee gets a stipend, but if you were to get technical, it's reported as wages. So the, the idea that was mentioned about a list of positions makes sense. What I'm suggesting is when the vote is called, if this motion to amend passes, then immediately table the main motion and go back and add the positions that are needed so that it can be acted on and it will be spelled out. And app, the whole, as Mr. Chico put it, applicable, applicable board or, or position. This is the point. Up until about, what, was it two years ago, one year ago, when the finance committee said, we're not increasing any, uh, any of these positions. Every year, if there was a two percent increment in union contracts or whatever, the boards and commissions and the individuals who hold the positions got those. That was start about two years ago. I remember Mr. Swatch was still here. There was feeling that the people who serve on these boards should be recognized even with a small stipend, it's two percent, excuse me, small increase, whether they're being paid, correct? I believe that that's why this, this motion has been put forward because it's to recognize service. And I think that's why they use them to term of three years or helping three years. So I, I think that there's the way to...
Going of order to not helping the amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Speaker.
I recommend to have this be broken down at this time and re-presented in clearer language so everyone will see and truly understand what positions are specifically.
So you're recommending a vote down amendment?
That is correct.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of amending it, the motion as presented on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Amendment fails. Back on the original motion.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table has been made and seconded on the floor. It's a non-discussion motion. Immediately move to vote. It does require a majority vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion tabled. Man, this is... Article nineteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote, consistent with section seven and eight of the existing Bristol-Plummet Regional Vocational Technical School District Agreement, among the towns of Berkeley, Bridgewater, Dyton, Middleburg, Rainham, and Reholt, to approve the amendment and restate the Bristol-Plummet Regional Vocational Technical School District Agreement to include the town of Free Town as a member of town as initiated and approved by the Board of the Regional School Committee and submitted to the Board of Selectmen of each member of town. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend?
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation? Would you like to speak to this motion?
I am, Mr. Moderator, okay. Um, are the gen, are the genesis, are the genesis of the restated agreement, uh, as the motion mentioned, was to allow, um, uh, to be able to join the B P district. Uh, Free Town years ago, I, I, I actually came in, um, and wanted to join, uh, the B P district at the same time, uh, or at around the same time that the town of Dyton wanted to rejoin the district as well. Uh, the only difference is, uh, like Dyton, uh, the only difference is the ability, uh, for the town of Dyton to rejoin, uh, was already allowed because Dyton, uh, like was actually an original member of the district. So like all, so like all, for all that party was doing, uh, was allowing the town of Dyton to, uh, join that into the agreement that the town, that the town of Dyton was already a part of, a Free Town did not, uh, have relative eligibility because they were never, uh, like originally part of the district in the first place. Uh, so it just would, uh, with the, the intent of the, uh, of the restated agreement would be to allow Free Town to join. Uh, you know, at the same time, Lightfield and the town in Tennessee, uh, like they, uh, they were original members, uh, but, uh, but have not been, uh, not active, uh, actually active participants of the district. Uh, when, uh, when B P brought, uh, like, uh, the proposed restated agreement, uh, to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, uh, the Department of, of Elementary and Secondary Ed at, uh, at the state level wanted additional, uh, actually updates and changes to, uh, the original agreement that also, uh, that all, uh, 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 that also, uh, actually updated changes in state law, uh, that had been approved and adopted, uh, like actually since the original B P agreement was adopted. So like, uh, the intent, so like all, so like of the agreement, uh, uh, really to allow the Free Town in, but because of all the changes in the laws that have happened in, uh, in the last so many years, I, 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 that's why the red line version, uh, like actually counted in the front was, uh, was, uh, so, uh, uh, was so extensive because it also reflects, uh, the changes in this, so, so, um, uh, you know, when the laws and the state education laws had been made sense. So I just wanted to give that over to you.
Thank you. Would you like to, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Moderator, by just add, um, by adding Free Town to this, that shares the expense of the new B P building that they're going to perhaps. So I think it's important that the town approve, uh, Free Town from the top to the bottom.
Correct, if I'm wrong, but I believe in the presentation from the superintendent of B P, it does not affect our, the amount of Dyton students that can go to the schools. Does it, or doesn't?
Does it, does not affect.
It does, so equals to all the same number of students, the legal provide. Further discussion on the motion?
Kate Rose on Lincoln Avenue. Uh, I'm going to recommend a no vote on this because there's a lot more to this story and I don't feel like we should aid and abet the people that are behind this. And if they can't get their wording on their documents straightened out, that's their problem.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article twenty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to amend the Town of Dyton's general bylaws by adding a new article, general bylaw guidance as presented in Article twenty of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend?
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation? Would you like to speak to the motion? Seeing none. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I do want the town to vote to adopt Massachusetts Department of Reverend optional cost of living adjustment for surviving spouses and blind persons on clauses seventeen, seventeen C, seventeen C and a half, seventeen B, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight and a half of Massachusetts General Law Channel fifty-nine, section five. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend?
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, uh, vote that, make a motion, uh, I move that the town will vote to adopt Massachusetts. Oh, there you go. And my one second. There it is. Sorry about that, excuse me. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to delete in its entirety section forty-six hundred ground-mounted solar, solar photovoltaic installation and replace with a new section forty-six hundred solar electric generating facilities and to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by modifying and adding the following terms and definitions in proper alphabetical order to section six definitions as presented in Article twenty-two of the special town meeting warrant dated November first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a planning board recommendation?
Planning board recommends.
Is there a Board of Selectmen recommendation?
Board of Selectmen recommend.
Article twenty-two with motion second recommended by the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. Would you like to speak to this motion?
I would, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Jeff Cabal, twenty-one, twenty-four Thomas Way, also chairman of the, uh, planning board. Um, Article twenty-two, uh, is your new solar electric generating facility bylaw for the town of Dyton. Uh, the most important part of this bylaw change is protections for the residents of the town of Dyton, uh, against, uh, not against, but in, in, in reference to, uh, battery energy storage facilities, uh, which in your packet on forty-six fifty-nine, uh, without this bylaw passing tonight, uh, know this, that the town of Dyton has no protections against battery energy storage facility, facility being installed in the town of Dyton. So as you think about which way you want to vote on this, just, just know that we do have a standard operating procedure in place as a stopgap, but the intent would be at this bylaw would pass tonight, we'd have additional protections which include, uh, more stringent safety and environmental standards to include developing an emergency response plan with the local emergency services, new monitoring, maintenance, and reporting requirements, minimum fire department access to municipal water supply system, water supply, uh, buffer battery assemblies no less than two hundred feet from any property line and a minimum of a hundred feet from the tree lines or vegetated buffer. Uh, those don't exist right now in the bylaw. Um, they do exist in the stop, but this bylaw would set it, uh, would set it in record. Um, as you know, this was, the version of this was presented at the annual town meeting in June, uh, that got tabled. Uh, there were some concerns. So we've heard concerns in residence. Uh, we've also gone out to, uh, other towns, surrounding towns, town of Dartmouth specifically, town of Rochester, and the town of Palmer, and we've done, uh, done some research on what they've done and had their successful programs specifically with the solar farm portion of this. So there's two parts to this. One is the battery energy storage, which is really important with the line batteries, everybody's very concerned about those. The second part is, and I know there's a lot of folks concerned tonight, is the solar farm bylaw portion of it. And so the updates since June, just to summarize those, uh, in the section forty-six fifty-one emphasizing dark sky compliant lighting in facilities, uh, some language was there, but that's been updated. Uh, in the definition of section six, we lowered the threshold of large-scale ground-mounted solar electric installations to two hundred fifty kilo lots. What does that mean? That means the threshold is lower because it was one megawatt prior. So this imposes this bylaw protection on much smaller commercial arrays. Forty-six fifty-nine is a dimension and density requirements is the setbacks. And I know this is a concern for a lot of folks here, but what we did was increase the side and rear setbacks to at least seventy-five feet and a hundred feet from any abiding dwelling and added an additional, uh, a buffer requirement. And this came for the town of Dartmouth and we, we adopted it. We, we would like to adopt it here where we said, in addition to all the setbacks for the front, uh, for the, the front and side yards, we also said that we would require a minimum thirty feet of natural buffer around the entire facility for screening. And buffer vegetation would need to grow to at least ten feet, five years after completion of construction. And a minimum, seventy-five percent minimum of most planted buffer vegetation is, uh, would have to be evergreen species. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
True that the bylaws presented provide more protection than the common state laws to failing solar and storage and storage?
Can you speak to, is it true that the bylaws presented will provide additional protections in the state laws?
I didn't do research on the state laws. These are usually adopted at the municipal level. So we were more concerned about how we protect the town of Dyton. I know at the state level there is a push for putting these in towns. We have, we're talking right now to a developer that wants to put one in North Dyton. You know, the power lines has like electrical pump and dump stations where they charge their batteries at night during off-peak hours and then roll the battery back onto, the power back onto the grid during peak hours to stop with power line fluctuations. So that's being driven at the Commonwealth level, at the state level. But really, as I understand it, it's up to the towns to really determine what they want to put in place for protections.
Further discussion?
Jim Seem, six seventy-five Main Street. I have a solar farm directly behind me, probably one of the first few that we put in town. And I'm wondering who's responsible for holding these contractors liable for all their promises before they put them in? As far as vegetation and taking care of the property. They fall way short on the one they put behind me. And I'm just wondering, who's, who do you call when stuff like this happens? That's what I want to know.
Can anyone speak to, who do you call when the post-installation, the contractor, the contractor is calling?
Call the building inspector.
Building inspector?
Building inspector.
The building inspector. Further discussion on the motion?
Hey, Rose, Alingan Avenue. Do we have an electrical engineer that can speak to this? Are we passing something? We have no technical knowledge of. What are we doing?
I'm an electrical engineer.
So, once he hears a electrical engineer he'll speak to the motion?
Mr. Moderator, David Rujoe, seven ninety Tremont Street. In section, the dimensional requirements that the chairman pointed out, the setbacks and side setbacks, I'm just wondering about the height restrictions because some of these facilities, they can go up and stall them in height with our thirty-two or thirty-five foot restriction still being a play, or is it less?
Does this amend the height restriction that's already in place?
I thought there was a ten-foot limit on any structure on this facility.
I know there was a ten-foot limit on the, I'm sorry. There was a ten-foot limit on the vegetation after a certain amount of years.
Right, that's the buffer, hang on.
But on buildings under zoning bylaws, there's a thirty-two or thirty-five foot height restriction. And I've seen some of these battery storage facilities exceed that. I know in our town we probably couldn't, but somebody could build something or it would meet the setbacks, but if they went thirty feet or twenty-eight feet, it might beat our height requirements also.
So does this override our other zoning bylaws part of height restriction from buildings? So, proper question?
Okay, I thought we specifically referenced ten feet. It might be in the standard operating procedure.
He's not speaking, he's speaking as a general.
As a general.
Within the other zoning bylaws, we have a height restriction. Please quote me if I'm misstating your question. Within the zoning bylaws, we have a height restriction within buildings of thirty-two feet. Does this override that? Please.
Hello, Dyton, James, I'm Billy and Commissioner. It's good to see everyone here. So to answer the question for Mr. Rujoe directly, all the other sections of our bylaws still apply. So you do have some validity in what you're saying. However, all of these go in under special permit requirements for the planning board. Those are all public hearings. And the planning board has set height restrictions on the structures located on the solar facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Bob Perry, Stansy on Drive. Back to this gentleman's point about who do you call? Something maybe to consider in the future in relation to this point. Maybe we need to consider a bylaw that requires major contractors who we happen to find that depose a bond that stays with the town to resolve those kinds of problems.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, as this is modifying a zoning bylaw, it does require a two-thirds majority vote. I ensure all registered voters that wish to vote, vote in the room. So I can delineate. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article twenty-three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town, town Dyton, will vote to accept as town roadways known as Galway Drive, Waterford Circle, and Carey Lane as described in article twenty-three the special town meeting warrant dated November first, 2022.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. Is there a Board of Selectment recommendation?
Board of Selectment recommends.
Planning board recommendation?
I'm sorry.
Scratch that, planning board recommends.
Motion has been made a seconded with Board of Selectment and Planning Board recommendation. Is there any discussion?
Moderator?
Yes.
Jonathan Gallow, twenty-two, one for Circle in Dyton, so that everybody knows what these three roads represent. This was, this is a forty-feet development in town. Developer is with us if there's any questions, but this is a forty-feet development in town, Stony Ridge Estates, which in the original documentation, this development was being proposed to the town and went through the zoning board at the time. Part of the documentation included